Okay, let's call the order. These rides for women are silent and smooth as wine.
I'm moving to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you don't talk, it won't be any hotter. Um, we apologize for the lateness. We're gonna jump right in. Christina Fish and Joe Furco have asked to speak. They reached out to me. They have a interest in using space at S P I Elementary. And I thought it was best for them to come and speak about their program. They're a nonprofit healthcare foundation for students. And I just think that's a big presentation if they can. You just have to speak up. You can come up to the table. I know that you're used to speaking in front of people, so it'll help.
Well, I have a teacher voice there. I definitely have a teacher voice there.
So I am Dr. Christina Fish. And this is my associate, Joe Furco. And we're from Behavioral Health Association. And we're, as Mrs. Hussey said.
Okay, oh, ready? We can't hear in the back. She's facing you, but we can't hear.
Okay. I'll do my best to project.
That's better.
I'm not gonna do that. I feel like I'm Madonna attempting. So, as stated, we're a nonprofit organization. We provide programming for students with behavioral needs and mental health needs. We're based out of Lee Heiden area. We have big buildings in Lee Heiden. And I'm looking to Mr. Furco because he has a long history with BHA mind. But I was brought on by BHA to look at bringing our services up into the IU-16 region. Right now, we are just in the Lee Heiden region. We service thirty-two, well, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven schools now in Lee Heiden that come, that send their students to our programming. We do students on, we're on the spectrum, intensive behavioral health, emotional support, outpatient mental health services. So we would like to talk about possibly renting the Nescafe building in order to bring our services north. Having been a special ed director, I used to be a Central Columbia School District. I know the needs in this region. And I know that I was actually, if any of you were teachers, I believe there are teachers in the audience, that heard of Five Star Program. I started that twenty years ago for IU-16, that's out of Sundar. But that is really, other than New Story, that puts here for autism, there aren't a lot of options up in IU-16. And having worked in special education myself for over thirty years, I was very picky about who I associated with because I know what good programming is. And so when BHA approached me and asked me to come on as a consultant, I was very impressed with our programming, which is why I'm sitting here today. So if you have questions of us about what kind of programs we have, we have a multitude of genuine services. We would like to be able to answer those questions. You wanna talk a little bit, Joe?
I think, I mean, and also right now, you would not be looking at writing the entire bill.
No.
You would only be looking at...
Yeah, we would be only starting with probably two, three classrooms. So we would only be looking at one thing of this. We prefer to put our programs in buildings that are schools, former schools, because we feel that it gives that sense of, I'm in a school, I'm not in a program. And it helps parents feel more comfortable about the services that we're providing. Their kids are coming to a school. So we really, we try to find school buildings that the district are all using because we feel that's a more appropriate setting for children. Our goal is for students to gain the skills necessary to return back to their home district. In fact, the program that was in Pride Road. Pride Road, you wanna talk a little bit about how we're a student back there?
Of course, and thank you for having us. Thank you for having us and seeing the books. So to piggyback off of what Dr. Fish was saying, we are a private, nonprofit education system, currently located in Harbor County, in the town of Lee Heiden. We have six to seven school buildings already in the town of Lee Heiden. And we have around seven to eight different school programs. And generally speaking, folks, we provide services to the areas most high-risk, high-need population. Again, I'll look up at Fish that I know there's some teachers in the audience saying, I don't know, special ed or anything of that nature, but for kiddos and special ed programs, it comes a lot of stigma. It comes some labels. One of the first things we do when we get kiddos in our program is we have, as we have given, what's called "in-state" resources. We like to give them a second chance to not just find school success, but be successful regardless of what the setting is for their school, the transportation, at home, in the community, et cetera. So we take, especially in my program, I represent what's called the BHA pride program. We have full-time emotional support. So we emphasize the therapy component throughout our school programming, where we try to get to the roots of some of these high-risk behaviors that are displayed in the school system, which are often considered surface-level behaviors. So by taking a whole learner approach, or students' families, we have kids who find school success for the first time in their lives. And we do transition kids back to the regular home district at a regular basis. We just had five to six kids graduate from our program just this past May. And it was one of the best experiences in my ten years at BHA.
We sent like twenty-eight kids back again.
Approximately twenty-eight.
To different school districts. So we find our success. And the reason districts seek us out is because of that return, that they return successfully.
So from a school board standpoint, just so you understand what they're saying, oftentimes, students, if they do get placed in another placement, they don't return very quickly. So that piece of that, that rehabilitation piece of it, or that working with them, is very important. We obviously want them back in our district. Maybe you could speak a little bit to how it's different than New Story? So New Story is the program that is...
He's not familiar with New Story.
Oh, sorry. Well, you are. But the only reason why I'm saying that is because New Story also, when the, when Mulberry Street was closed, they moved into that building. And then they service a different population. So I don't, I mean, I don't think you're going to be saturated anymore.
No, we're not looking to duplicate New Story. New Story is more of a focus on children on the spectrum. And the programs that we're looking to bring, we do have a similar program, where we are looking to bring in our emotional support and our intensive mental health piece for kids who are more likely to be in your emotional support programs, who are not successful behaviorally, whether it be attendance, or work compliance, or school compliance. Those are the students that we're looking to service.
And Mrs. Hagelin, how close are the mental health programs that you consider kids to be right now?
We're looking about forty minutes away, going either towards Kingston or at least down to Danville. Going towards like Kingston or going towards like Danville area for mental health services.
So what's there, say, though?
I know that I've spoken to the superintendents in some of the neighboring districts, and they are looking for services as well. In fact, I was on with Bloomsburg just today. So they're looking for something closer. Because it really, when I was at Central, I was sending, we would be sending to Sundar, up to Wilkes-Barre. So, you know, having something closer to home, it's better for children. They're not on the bus as long. And it also keeps them within their local communities, so that they're even more likely to gain the skills necessary to return back to their home school, because that's always our goal, is for them to be in the school. Questions? It sounds like...
It sounds like...
Yes. What I also like about BHA, having formally been in the second position, is that they have the outpatient, mental health services, which we compare with any of the BHA programs we do. So that's not something that we have a lot of access to for adolescents.
We tend to be a one-stop shop for LEAs or families. I have thought that BHA have an access point between mental health-related issues and educational related issues, which are a bridge gap for our families. Just like a one-stop convenient situation for everyone involved, all stakeholders involved.
And to speak to the company, just in the last twelve months, we hired a hundred and twenty employees. So we have expanded exponentially in just seven years. So that speaks to the need that we're meeting. Any questions?
One of the hot points of the prison nest of ours that's totally not safe, you can upgrade to it, you mentioned the safety issues.
Yes, we would have our own, every building that we've gone into, we have our own maintenance group that comes in and does fixing. We also work with whatever the landlord is. That what they can do, you know, we ask that they do. If they can't, then we find a way to do it. But yes, we've improved every building that we've ever taken on. I come from Lee Heiden, having been the superintendent of Lee Heiden. And in that district, we closed four elementary buildings and lifted a primary center. Two of those four elementary buildings are BHA buildings. And I've been in them, and BHA has made a tremendous amount of improvements to what was existing. So yes.
We made mini splits, all the renovations off the bottom. Actually, Dr. Fish, we now have three out of the four.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
Yes, absolutely. Like Dr. Fish said, every building we went into, we collaborate with the landlord. We not only fix whatever, we have to fix what we could do. That's not a commercial seat for our landlord there. Again, many splits, a couple sets of figures. On that, just to control the environment or the governing thing, we'll be there. The whole environment will be there.
We would.
We don't have like a district-wide resource or...
But you mean like the buzzing and having people monitoring the door? And that would all be us. Our type of people would come in and do the swipe card. We would be managing.
We will be, whoever's going to be a source of this.
No, no, that would be our job.
But is that a model sometimes, like, if you wanted to contract, I'm just saying, options and model? And I'm not just saying security, I'm saying maintenance or if you wanted to contract with the hood or the option is to please handle that.
Right, yeah, we are very flexible. We do what the landlord or whoever the property wants to do. We have our own resources as well. And now to jinx us, that we really haven't had to use local law enforcement. I put that out and promise when I get back.
Same on the profit?
Yes. Our revenue streams are tuition. And we do bill for mental health services. But what our, what our board tells us is that as long as we break even, they're happy. And so that's our goal, our goal, that's why we're nonprofit. We aren't out making, our board members aren't making money and having mansions in Florida. Our board members are there because they've started this business because they need and giving kids the services they need. And they're also very into their staff. What impressed me about them is that, and Mr. Furco is an example of that, is they do a lot of work internally in promoting their staff. So they send their staff to training. So people that started out as aides are now teachers. People who started out as teachers are now directors. The one director is now the CEO. So they do a lot of internal promotions, which I think helps us as well. We have very high retention rates for our staff because they know that there's opportunity within our company to grow.
Just to bring that up, Dr. Furco, for example, thank you for the question, I appreciate that. I started up the organization a decade ago as a, literally this August, I started my doctor. They, BHA absolutely invests not just in their employees, but in their families. We try our best to be a family-first organization. And we improve that sentiment on the program. And that's why I'm saying it's like a one-stop shop for all our families, regardless of their needs. You know, happy and creative, from what are your needs, we will work together to meet them.
We also have a family, we also work really hard to help the families work with their children and learn the strategies that we're using with them. Which was something when I started the Five Star Program, I'd always wanted to be able to do is to be able to have that opportunity to help families learn more about what works for their kids. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Furco, did you have something else to bring up in academic affairs?
Just real quick, that agreement that I have on the agenda that's attached, it's a dual movement agreement, and it is based on financial literacy. And as of right now, we only have three students enrolled, and we have a plan how we're going to follow through with that. And it is at no cost, feed the district.
So another issue that we talked about, that falls on academic affairs, we had a committee meeting, footballing, which is what we're attending. It was a nice time for us to gather and sit down with the principals of each school and have them come up with, if we had a wish, if the budget was hurting us the most, we're going to keep doing, take the district further, the fastest. Some of those things was the ultimate referred incentive, our student engagement, and we look for a, a long, that we used to have before, trying to take a look at that to see if we could push that work, and directly application, and ultimate learning, side work, having to do for twelve, fourteen years, blended hearing, scheduling of grades, progress, certification. So another thing that I will, or he has a point, is the state is very proud of that. I thought it was continuing to do these meetings. So I know we have a lot of teachers in the audience right now. If we have concerns, please take the principal and say, this is something that will help us out the best, fastest. Take those concerns to the principal, so they can bring them to us on our next meeting, everything's going to stay up to the longest.
Just real quick, the audit report. Our audit is complete, no findings, no weaknesses. Thank very much to Jupera Valley, which are our business and office, we work with placing our auditors to ensure accuracy. Prior year, we did have some small findings, mostly related to excessive entries, but all been corrected and that went very well. The twenty-four, twenty-five year end, as we wrap up, our revenues were up due to the Esra fund, which represented about fifty percent of our federal fund. The oldest fund will be a star. However, the food service funds increased due to one percent free lunch program, which represents about twenty-four percent of our funds, and that is ongoing. Overall, state was about twenty-seven million, had represented fifty percent of our revenues. Not quite enough for our landlord, so we still remain in line, I wouldn't say tax or any kind of general revenue. Currently, we're working on a solution to potentially open a tax issue.
Christina, can you speak up?
Can you hear me okay? Ed? We're going to start working with Dr. Shafel and Ms. Hagelin. So we're going to have an Esra monitor that starts for the week of July twenty-second. This audit covers from 2020 through 2024. And we did file for the file Esra subsidy last week. We expect to see this one for the next thirty days, until all of the title kind of makes up.
Building some grounds up there?
You have my report, I'll just go over a couple things. By the end of this week, we should have what teachers go from Nescafe to Salem moved over. There are a few that will, there's a few that will need to go to other buildings. I think one's going to the middle school, one's going to West Berwick. Those will follow that, but that's going along really well. We have... So those teachers that go to the other buildings will follow after the Nescafe ones come over. This week, we have all the classrooms cleaned at Salem, where they moved the Nescafe teachers into there. The construction, as you can see, is about ninety percent done. There's a few things that need to be done, but we're, we're knock on wood. We're at a good spot with Salem. The Nescafe teachers have been coming in, we've been doing a few things. They've been fantastic. The Salem teachers have come in and blew some things around for various reasons, and they've been fantastic too. I don't have anything, E I associates, I saw a passing email to Mrs. Kupsky about them wanting to meet with each individual principal. And that's not set up yet?
No, they didn't.
They didn't?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see anything on it anyway. So they want to meet with each individual principal. I think it's a curriculum related stuff. And as far as how many kids are in your building and the utilization of that building with the students. And the kitchen equipment has started coming in. We've already started moving some stuff to the buildings. And we have more shipments coming, so so far, so good. That's, everything's working out pretty good so far. I don't want to jinx myself, but any questions?
We have an exponential program. We have two-hundred-and-twenty-four students graduating in the high branch education program. Several who have followed at Harrisburg Community College on May fifteenth. The event highlighted the importance of education equity and access and the program's commitment to providing all students with the resources and support that they need to succeed. They also are C I S, S I U, was invited to attend the annual conference at Calhary Resort in Parkland. And they have two employees who selected to present great our session. And that was Rayanne Crispell and Dr. Ellen Pack. And the title of their program was Building Team Promotion in the First Place. For someone listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupsky. Do you not have a policy of new meeting this month? Okay, we have, I've had a meeting on June eighteen. The renovations are progressing very nicely. We reviewed the solicitor services, we reported four, twenty-five school year, approved the number for the H B A C R, patient-wide committee. We're also told very concerning numbers. They have heard an upcoming school year, approximately about two-hundred-and-thirty special ed kids who are relative comparisons to state, we just graduated a hundred-and-forty-four. So you're looking at basically a class and a half of special ed. And right now, Mrs. Kupsky, you might have some inputness from the activities. There's two. Emergency repairs that need to be done now. One is to replace the floor in the field house, it's spongy, they can't use it for wrestling practice. And replace a sewer line in four-hundred hallway at Old, this original sewer line that was approximately three inches worth of foot in, now it's about half a side, easily clogged and easier to flush. They're looking for capital contributions for the setting districts to make up the money. We originally were trying to get through that Act thirty-four grant when we're going here. Dollar amount's not high enough to go for that. So we're looking at doing, getting capital contributions for that amount. Basically, you don't need to save as the building project, which ours is, it's five percent. Whatever it is, based off of real estate, except for capital contribution, capital calculation from the tuition. So those are two things we're looking at. For, they obviously need to be done in case they can't use the upper floor in the field house. And the sewer line, you can't have that backed up. Okay, when there's a lot of concerns about that, do you look at what you might say that happens? They're paying for this? For our share? This part is a second option. So ours is wrong, and like, we decided on all of that back-up relation. I mean, partly it isn't ideal, we just passed our budget, so does everyone else. But, you know, emergency repairs. One did, I expressed, our members just on air, is to start, in addition to behavioral tuition papers, we're going to do capital reserve. Now with stuff like this, um, we have plenty of reserves to cover.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Hussey, do you remember that being a conversation when we approved the capital, the renovation right now? So they haven't been able to start any reserve account for...
Not yet, but it's possible they can start a store.
Do they, do they have any ideas how they, I mean, obviously, they'd have to increase tuition.
They have to, second, money, tuition, the year tuition is part of the population. Which they should be, but now, whatever Act said, which is maybe a hundred thousand should be based upon population. I mean, even though we did from sixteen, some of the, as you already said, I mean, you gotta base the fact that for the thousand ability, we built the nine hundred and sixty-eight. We're not touching with the twelve million dollars, so... and sixty-eight, so, we're not touching the twelve million dollars, so, all, I'm very concrete, so, that has to go, yeah, maybe, a lot of it.
Any questions, Mr. Hussain?
And all, and one last thing is, technically, right now, you're not planning to have a July, so, what's that, Jeff?
I think this is the end of the meeting, the whole, you know, move it on, we will break the meeting. If I want the agenda, it's the approval of ordinance in the last meeting, they're not in question. The link's correct, it's, uh, it's the three, five. So then, same understanding, all of the promotions are approved, the meeting is contained in the table. June meeting announced, motion approved. Home favorite, opposed, eyes have it. On the business end, we report, statutory transfers, we're getting motion to, for statutory transfers. Second, home favorite, opposed, eyes have it. Next, we have presentation of the bills. Any questions on the bills, Mr. Hussain?
I just have one question, this is July bills for, for year, aging level coach, uh, also can you trip to our baseball stadium, uh, twenty-nine, is that for school buses or is that for coaches?
I can't, I can't even, I can't even hear you here, so.
We definitely can't hear, we hardly can hear anything.
You need to buy aging level coach, it's in July of, uh, twenty-four, it's for an able trip for, for our baseball, eleven-hundred ninety dollars, I thought it was that for school buses or is that for coaches?
Aging level for baseball, because at the end, we get so many trips and everything, and we have to get games at a certain time, we have so many trips in Gallaudet, and we have to get a game every day.
Uh, they were short buses.
Yeah, I mean, they did, they go to Combs, they go home, so when I don't have a bus, and I try to call around my short buses, we do, so we have to get, and we have to get our varsity, varsity games, all even cancel junior high games, and move around so I can get all my varsity running to baseball, track, everything, that's what happened, and we just had to give the dates and the time, because of, uh...
The reason I ask, it used to be a standing practice for many, many years, that the district always provided school buses, and if any sport wanted to operate the coaches, it was up to the booster club to pay for that.
We still follow them.
We still follow. Here, it looks like it's an emergency, I get them.
Any other questions on the bills? Motion approved, second, home party?
Yeah. Um, the state budget, uh, was passed, uh, earlier than what it was last year, within the scale of what it was. Um, so, along the same lines of what, um, we just heard the presentation about school safety and mental health, um, a hundred million dollars for school safety and mental health grants, uh, I'm just gonna highlight some areas because, uh, I did a, a half-hour meeting today with the governor's office, and, um, it takes a long time for us to, uh, work through needs, to say of where these funds are, are landing, so, they did it a little bit different this year, and they put some of their funds in a few different places. Um, schools, uh, school security personnel, uh, school, uh, enrollment notification, so, as we all know, cyber charter funds have been a thorn in everybody's side, um, so, they're restricting, uh, the cyber charter tuition amount, not to what the school districts wanted it to be, but it is estimated that it could be a thirty-four point five million dollar savings to school districts. Now, this, uh, just so you know, cyber charter funds are still sitting on billions of dollars in their, in their savings accounts, based on the tuitions that they charge, uh, but it's still a right, a step in the right direction, and we're, we're happy about that. Um, they have to notify school districts within ten days of a student who may withdraw from them, and others, even though they would do sometimes, they would leave them on their walls, even just a few extra days, um, creating additional tuition for the school district. Um, you also have to have, or they also have to have student wellness checks, no longer are students, um, able to, um, avoid, you know, uh, coming into the school building, or maybe potentially addressing some mental health issues. Um, sometimes, that's, uh, an avenue that some students would take so that they didn't have to go down that path, and we all know that that's not what's in the best interest of the students, so they have to do wellness checks. Um, be... Basic ed funding, uh, it was, I forgot where my basic ed funding, basic education funding was, is up to eight point six billion dollars, it is an increase, a three point six percent increase, not what we had expected, but again, like I said, some funds have been moved around to some different, uh, to some different areas. Um, and some, some subsidies that they've added, uh, so, we get the ready-to-learn block grant, that would be one area where they, that's four-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars, uh, the tax equity supplement also in the ready-to-learn grant, that's been increased, and, and... Sixty million dollars for the new whole heartless relief, uh, for basic education funding, and a hundred million dollars, uh, for cyber charter reimbursement, and, um, a hundred million dollars, uh, for secondary education, and, uh, dual enrollment, so, you see on the agenda tonight, we have another dual enrollment, Bob, how many, how many dual enrollment agreements does that make for us?
Well, after next month, we're going to have a bunch of articulations with, uh, Commonwealth aligned with our new CTE for teaching.
Okay.
So, we have, we have several, I, I would say the majority are LCCC, we have with three outside the area, and we're going to have several different tweaks with, uh, Commonwealth. We also have a Lackawanna, there are major ones, at times, we'll have in the works, but there are major ones at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we have kids who graduate from high school, uh, with thirty-plus credits, college credits, at, at a discounted rate for them to be able to gather, to get those credits while they're here, um, in high school, so the dual enrollment program is, um, is successful. Uh, we will have an EI update, so just like when, uh, Mrs. Crispell just said about, um, EI associates meeting with our principals, they're gonna give us a brief update in August, they're asking for, maybe, um, and then the, the next full, of the full, uh, completion of this, uh, September four, October. Um, and, uh, the school board will be, we, we are, we need to set a meeting date, it will be public for AWS, um, to meet with the school district and discuss, you know, uh, a partnership, uh, looking for what that looks like. I can tell you, like, they're looking at, or they'd like either August twenty-second, or, not August, July twenty-second, or that singular week, or the week after, the week of the twenty-ninth, July twenty-ninth, and I'll send out a survey, you know, of course, it will all be in this meeting, um, but I'll send out a survey, so I'll ask you guys. Okay? Let's hear it.
Thank you. That brings us to our first round of committee, three minutes, and this period is for agenda items meeting, the state name, township number.
Head of Wardwalk, Berwick, I have a question to the Bo-Tech J O C board. I feel it is unacceptable to keep asking or sending districts for more money for athletics. We had implemented several years ago, that reserve fund, which was supposed to go into effect to help curb unforeseen expenses. It seems that the J O C keeps asking, sending districts for more money all the time for athletics. At what point do the taxpayers get some relief, and we start focusing on making this a trade education school, keep the clubs, keep the organizations, but we are paying for two athletic teams. At some point, we're gonna have to say athletics need to be cut, and they need to go back to their sending districts. I think you really need to start tightening your belts, and you need to stop asking the sending districts to keep sending more money, sending more money, what are you doing with the budget down there? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing, Mr. McBurro, uh, item fourteen on your agenda, it says approval on budget is planned by one, what is it? There's no explanation on that, again.
Yeah, there is nothing, sorry, that's, we are struggling without our Rachel, um, that's sorry, and that's no offense, but, um, Teresa Conrad is double-dipping with her, with her regular job until, um, Rachel Charlotte releases her back to us.
So there is no?
There is no item.
No item one, okay, same for, approval, all right, for item one, without...
Sorry, apologize.
Any one else? We vote, we have nothing for budget finance or extra particular, transportation, we have three items, the five approvals. We give motion to approve this, Bob. Second, home favorite, opposed, eyes have it. Yeah, first four personnel items, it's a big one motion, and we have a question for the five. We give motion to approve personnel item one through four. Home favorite, opposed, eyes have it. Personnel item six is to hire Jessica Fur as special education teacher, step fifteen. Motion approved, second. six, master, we give motion to hire her, second, home favorite? Yes. Next, we have approval to hire Marcus Wapinski, a secondary associate studies teacher, step one, we give motion to hire. Second, red card please. Yes. Yes. Next, the approval of hire Dave Dino, a secondary associate studies teacher, step one, we give motion to hire him, one, red card please. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Anybody have any, old business tonight?
I have a update, last week, I requested the meeting with our, uh, council attorney Audi, we met with them on the ninth, this is lawyer, two people myself, or four members who were dependents, we were asked to have a type of questions we'd like to ask Mr. Audi, they were provided, I wish everyone could see which ones they were. I did serious find in that meeting, first off, he built questions about some of his advice, and so, second, when we started asking questions, he got very defensive, the point was just for unsanitary accusations, but, my recommendation is to terminate, you know, special counsel, not Audi, effective meeting, all you pay for it. There's other, uh, I've experienced other legal firms, go in legal through the sex ed stop, they found work, for, have a district in this area, they've done, for that, for one to step in, represent us, this doesn't affect your status, but this would surround cars after some. I think if we're gonna, really dig into our council, who's to be fair, if you take all our, to look back at Mr. Audi for the past two years, he's ever been in misery for fifteen, twenty years, for one time, he's the only two items, law against him, I don't know whether, if we're gonna do this, I think we should do this for all of our councilors, to be fair, and to be fair to Mr. Audi, how he handled himself in that meeting. For one time, the only two items go against him, I don't know whether, if we're going to do this, I think we should do this for all of our councilors, who care. To be fair to Mr. Audi, how he handled himself in that meeting, I believe he, he handled himself equally as it was supposed to him, he went toe to toe. I'm faulting for how he handled himself in that meeting, the circumstances he used to face.
I want to go personal, I won't believe it.
I didn't intend to take it to a personal level, I was, you guys, between you and him, I missed that completely, so, I did go back through the notes, I didn't see the comments personally. You're welcome to make the decision. I will get this as a emergency item, I mean, we have other board members that have grievances, that have our practice to disagree. If they ask questions for these accusations that we throw at them too, I mean, Bob, I've known them all time, we've agreed to disagree many times, I've never, ever counted that. No, no, I just, I just say, if you enable yourself graciously, you answer questions, defend your stance, and then then give me one. That's kind of what I expect from a professional. I mean, I could be able to contact attorneys, my professional. Support this for Audi or whatever you got. Um, I guess the concern is if, there's a number of litigation cases going on, where they're called, that, that this firm is involved, that they're the only one involved, and they have to be. I'd be concerned if you're saying to change council immediately, number one, if you do not have a basic council, where do you go? If not knowing what the scheduling and the part, boards do not accept raising council, raising to a step, if there's something pending, and, yeah, if this could be out, this would be out of support. First, I don't know that, we actually can agree to disagree, I don't know that this is urgency. If that honestly, if that is the board's decision, we may get confirmation to put on the agenda, add, number one, every word of that could be present, choose, also have that information from Mr. Audi on each of those cases before this. Just so that this would not put at a loss, the person's having too bad, each other, great count, that would be my only concern. I'm not trying to take sides, I'm a merit order side, or not.
As far as I'm concerned, the extended basis of the special, I have, they weren't, they weren't still represented, I know she's not handling the office issue, they were special.
What are you saying, not have this, Audi, or you're saying not have this firm?
I said this best, I have a biggest concern.
Okay, and that's quite a clarification. I believe that John is the main, I mean, person, that all, not sure what, I believe that's the basis, that all says it. So, when a client, when a client hires an attorney within the firm, they hire the firm, the firm then has to be the individual lawyer or lawyers that handle the case. A client might think they're hiring a lawyer, and in actuality, they're hiring an attorney, in chat, assuming the thing I never checked is, I don't see this, is I assume that the bills come from Sweet Stevens. Correct. It would be possible to talk with the principals of Sweet Stevens to express your satisfaction with this, or Audi, and ask that you not be involved in any cases of the district that does the board's desire. But if you say you want on Mr. Audi, Sweet Stevens said, if we brought you, you're hiring our own, and it was that case, that's who you're going to have to then change, and hire, not just me. I understand, you're a friend of, two sides, personally, I would not have gone on you, you said you thought, I could, if you had a good client, I would obviously, obviously. Talk on the phone, maybe, yeah, I'm not trying to support the board, and.
I thought about, I see.
He's got a very good reputation, so, yeah.
So, please, the meter is in any different, different part of the special act?
I thought it was, I don't know, I didn't know that we even.
I just.
That would be my only concern, is that, if you thought it's, not as a place, in for the cases that are pending, and that's still, right. Honestly, they, they are hired on a new basis, so, the only basis that they're due, that have, is what you have to do for this, that is all, interpretation, bargaining, honestly, there's some special cases. Unless something new, still something, you have to do something, something new, honestly, that they, who went and hired, next we have you.
They went off, I was gonna have to give Mr. Charman.
As far as how he handled himself, I don't fault him for how he handled himself, as the board, he does work for us, we should set the standard for behavior for anybody that works below. And I believe the work, they did a better job, with their approach, I believe, I would expect any of our employees, if they're going to the board, was offensive with them, or overly aggressive, I would expect them to invent themselves, just as it's reality. And that's all I can say.
I would say, I don't feel that, I mean, there's a lot of hands, I'm having to deal with, because we're arguing, maybe I could wish for more, probably.
Do you listen? I don't, it's good, I think. Meeting went out already, next meeting, it's over, but, 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 uh, first question, if you remember, you went up, the case, walked in, the path, that, that, I got, that, that, you were sitting on that side, I'm sitting on the other side.
Maybe if you walk down, that would be better.
First question, I don't recall this, this question, but he did. No, no, Mr. Miss, you called up, first question. I, I didn't start till later.
He didn't get, he asked, do you, do you elect this, I would expect him to do, I mean, on one, I expect him to hold his own.
The final one, they can play, so you're not the wrong man, no, I think you realize that, you're not the wrong guy, I didn't say it was, you know, I didn't bring it up, I know, I made it, but.
I'm talking about that, and they, yeah, I know a bit too, not, you didn't figure it out.
All right, so, so.
And it is with him too, it always is with him too. I think if there was a stuff, I, I, the firms right now, I work.
It's very difficult to hear, it's very, very difficult to hear.
First, I worked with that BoTec, the eleven legal group that Saxton Stump, which is, that crap was the name, I worked with there, and, with general counsel, under group for labor. I would say it's one fence, the board's interested, all top of the day, I'd be, see, need to like this, yeah, if we're gonna do that, I think this, this is reality, yeah, here, read that first. Well, right, I mean, I would think that we must start, we can do it then, at this point, let the board decide. Anything else on that? Yeah. I started off with a common special conversation, I pick all the time, and then just ramps up very.
Well, I definitely did those three sides of the story, and then, minimal, if we're gonna talk about those, we can just have the session, you see, so the whole board can, and, and, so that be, so we can have a better, more decision about it, I, at minimum, we should kill, quit, release time of this.
We need everybody to let us know. Anybody else have any old business? I know we talked a lot about the booze, and.
Can you use your mic, please?
Sorry.
I know we've talked a lot about the booze, and, and where classes would feed, stuff, and a lot of it was about numbers, and maybe we went over it as far as where classrooms were going. It was brought to my attention by some employees, that we're gonna have two full-time fourth grade classrooms right next door to our artistic classrooms, which tend to be, due to nature, a little noisy. Would it be, would it have been more prudent to put something special, or, learning support, or something that's not full-time classroom next to those classrooms?
By law, all special education classrooms have to be in the, in, below, under regulation, so you're not allowed basically bound to the name of the areas. They're coming for our goods, and we're looking for action for it.
Very concerned with the product, even I.
Yeah, and you could, you know, and just have, let the staff go, Mrs. Segler, or the building principal, and, you know, see if anything's on, that, that would be a, a direction that they would go, I'm sorry, I'm saying, I'm just, yeah. While he's talking, actually, I have the responsibility of school board association recognition, I'll just scan around, to that, so I was just.
There's some one thing, was somebody else, Brian?
Hi.
Anybody have anything else for old business?
A new business? For new business, I think we should have a committee on the board to, to initiate with Amazon, I think it'd be more efficient than having all nine, just try to sit down with them. And I also think we should have outside consultant advisor, to help the board, to work through this. He is available, put what's Mr. Boyd back on, on the, on the, I'm looking at somebody that has early experience, paid experience, like, somebody like that.
I think that's supposed to be an expert, or a person that's not, just have a new apartment, having a special, turn, just like, partner, that's, that's.
That's what I want, the specials.
Was that?
I think it'd be appropriate to have him involved, but, yeah, absolutely. You are going to have outside, outside council, actually, for, we, secondary, yeah, they don't, they have, back, they're all ready to come down, check out.
In the timing with Amazon. Why are you looking at me?
I have a board number, and, and.
We're gonna, we're gonna have that special meeting, or, in time to, 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 to do, to, to have an evaluation, we have, so.
If we need, need, they're not just stopping, they're helping the board.
Yeah, for a designated committee, I was thinking Mr. Hess, Mr. Eisenhower, and Mr. Meskow. Board can decide as a whole whether we want to have a specialist on the table.
And we don't need that. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything for new business?
I had one thing, it's come up in the past, really, that employees are being told not to speak to board members at all, and I think that's something we shouldn't be doing, something we should be getting rid of in this district. That we need communication, not stopping communication. I don't think.
Come up with more than one board number.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I didn't ask you, I, I didn't talk to you.
Yeah, no, when you, when you see people on public, there should be no reason, you shouldn't be talking to people. There's a policy against that. I think, I mean, I, it's not, it's not all, um, good.
Right. That is general going ons of the district.
And this is my personal opinion, I mean, if somebody from the board wants to contact a teacher or administrator, I mean, I think they should go through this inspection, that's, I think that should be the general chain of communication. I mean, you need somebody out in town, I don't think you have to call Mrs. Cuthbert, ask her, set that up.
I'd answer, that satisfactory, I mean, do you, do you need more?
I guess, if, don't feel it's right, employees being told not to talk to board members, you're broken.
Yeah, I agree. I believe based on board members, they're going to be, they're going to be, they should be.
Yeah, we need to get there.
I'm just saying, go on the other way.
We should be sticking out for employees, which would be, you know, the chain.
Anybody else have anything for new business? This brings us to our last round of public comment, three minutes, please state your name, and township of Berwick.
Carol Bonwalk, Berwick, just regarding the last discussion, communication is always key, and it seems that there's this constant cycle of employees not being allowed to talk to board members and administrators. It has to stop, communication is A number one, remember, there's always a chain of command, and whatever is said in exact session stays in exact session, thank you. Thank you.
Paul Sledge from Berwick. This is the first meeting I've been to in about five years. And I stopped coming to school board meetings, because you can never hear what's going on. That's when you're sitting with your back to it. And I'm here, and I'm interested in what's gonna happen with Amazon. I heard Amazon a couple of times, and that's all I heard. Either get a P H assistant that works, or just stand up and you're gonna talk. We're here to learn about what's going on in the district. We can't learn a thing, because we can't hear you. If you don't want us to hear you, just throw us out.
Uh, good to see you, Mr. Burrow. Amazon, of course, is a hot subject. A lot of people are gonna, a lot of money. School board members should be very aware that you cannot profit in any way of your vote. To get to school code. So, anybody plans on their business profiting from this, uh, they should do the right thing, be off school one now. If they plan on becoming employed by Amazon after the vote, they should do the right thing, be off school one now. They can abstain their vote. And still, I don't, I don't wanna see any wrongdoing by any school board members. Because of today's climate, I think Attorney General would love to hop on school board members who are fully wrong, much pushing for the law, like dealing with Amazon in ways that they shouldn't. I think the attorney board could probably back that up a little bit. Be in violation of school codes, and do not profit from any, or any vote that they make.
Absolutely. That's true, that's true in anything, and I would... I know that the entire board, as the previous boards know that. And I certainly hope that they all follow, and everyone, but we don't. Township, school board, whatever. Everybody.
While, while you are negotiating behind closed doors, remember, everybody watching. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mary Ann Gobleski, Berwick. I agree with Mrs. Bodwalk. You know, communication is the key to any functional body. In the last few years, I've seen communication deteriorate. And it could say to say that district morale has taken a hit as well. Really, and people are afraid. You think they're gonna go to the chain of command and say, speak when they're afraid of what possible retaliation could be? Perhaps it's time to do a district-wide survey, an anonymous survey that goes out to all employees, where they will feel free to speak about what is going on in the district. They'll be able to make their honest comments, and then perhaps they won't be seeking out board members to express their concerns. So, just something to think about.
Mr. Michalowski, Nescapex. I didn't think I was gonna quote, but someone brought up, again, about the Nescapex transition. Any word yet on where the bus stops are gonna be, or anything about the busing for the Nescapex students? Because I haven't heard anything. My kids are both being in the middle school, so it's easy for me. But I do have parents asking me, because they know I get up and ask questions, if I've heard anything, which I have not. So, again, I ask, when will the bus stops be finalized for the Nescapex students?
Our transportation coordinator is working on them, Sarah Lynn. And we typically send them out, do I wanna say the first week of August? Yeah, the first two weeks of August is when they're sent out district-wide. So, she's working on that.
And I understand that in a normal year, but parents have no idea what's coming. So, it's hard to plan with two weeks to go left in the summer, to then scramble for childcare if the child's not gonna be picked up at what wouldn't be their normal times. Before, they would be dropping them off at Nescapex, and now they gotta get bused. And where's that gonna be? And who's gonna be there? Safety concerns for the bus stop. So, there's a lot that parents have to scramble in two weeks then, to try to figure out, to make sure that their kid is safe, secure, and is going to be able to get on that bus. You just, I know it's a lot to work out, but the sooner the better, so parents can play it accordingly.
We, we just really wanna make sure we put out accurate information before it becomes information that would have to change, you know, and then shift that, you know, shift that again. So, she's working diligently with all of the bus contractors to make sure that she gets it accurate, and gets it right the first time, and addressing safety issues and those concerns.
Is it still bus stops along Second Street and bus stops along Fourth Street? Is that still the proposal right now?
I mean, that's the, that's the plan right now.
And is the, that rural buses, the country kids, as I call it, uh, still going to be picking up from on Second Street and on Fourth Street? So, my concern is, I know when my kids get picked up every year. How is that going to change with this coming year of them having to make additional stops in town? So, because I know when I have to get out the door to get to work, and I need to plan that accordingly, as do most other parents. That, that's what I'm getting at.
I think actually, board member, Mr. Carlo addressed that, you know, the timeframe. But we, I think we've addressed the timeframe, and how long it takes for bus stops to happen. But we're working on it. Um, she's, she's definitely trying to get it done sooner than, than we have in the past.
And I respect Mr. Carlo's, you know, comments in the past, but eight minutes for four bus stops in town? I, I don't think that's ever gonna happen. It's gonna take much longer than that. Thank you.
Claudia Glennon, Salem Township. Uh, I'd like to address the policies concerning our LGBTQ plus students that were brought up at the last meeting. And the stated objectives for the, those previously presented policy changes were respect for all individuals. And I'd like to say that singling out individuals as being different and treating them differently is the opposite of respect.
Anyone else?
Nancy Nixon, Berwick. I just wanna say something. This goes back to the previous board, um, but you guys are just as bad. I want you to be thinking about something very simple. It's called loyalty. And you have some very loyal employees here. And I've heard different rumors about why people are leaving this district, but maybe it's how you treat your loyal employees. And you need to think about that very quickly before you make other decisions ahead that end up ruining. Just because a person is in this community and has their life here, and their family here, don't use that against them by making sure to show the rest of the employees that are young and coming in here, that you don't respect them enough, especially when you're going to decide their job and their salaries. And I've talked to a couple of people on this board, and let them know my feeling. And what I get is, some of you may have missed the situation, because you just didn't sit down and figure the actual facts. But those who did, you can't blame one person. And I know at times, that's what's done, but each one of you voted on those situations. And you are going to get a chance to vote on very, many more. Think about our people, our employees, and how many have been here a long time. And please, let's keep them. Thank you.
Danielle Kirschbaum, Salem Township. And I agree with, um, Glennon. Um, I think that not only should we think about, you know, the different, um... First of all, okay, some of you did not talk in your microphones, okay? And we could not hear you guys at all, okay? And second of all, you know, um, we basically not only need to think about the employees, but you need to think about the people in the area. Think about the people that are sending their kids to the school district. You know, think about what they, how they wanna do it. Because the only reason why you guys have a job is because of our kids. Think about that, you know? So, basically, you guys need to think about how we want our kids to be treated, basically. You know, and we shouldn't have to go to Mrs. Kupsky for everything, because I know, Mrs. Kupsky, you don't have time for all of that. You know, God bless you. You know, if you do, God bless you, you know? Because that would be a lot on your shoulders, you know? So, basically, you know, if you guys want to have a certain person to go to, and then you guys all have a meeting about it, great, you know? Do that, do organization. Just try to organize it, you know? But you, you should all be able to communicate, and all be able to, you know, talk about it. Why can't we communicate? Think about it. Take care, God bless you.
Carol Bodwalk, I'll make this brief. You have to understand how many services were cut years ago. You keep saying, organize, find somebody. Do you really realize how many services were cut? And our staff is stretched thin. I, I, you, you keep bringing this up every time. You did it when I was on the board. You're not understanding that state and federal services were cut. And the budget reflects that. And there's only so many people in our district. I mean, how, how much more do you want them stretched? So, you have to also give them the benefit of the doubt. Give the teachers and the administrators and the board a benefit of the doubt.
I'm just telling them, communicate, that's all.
But you're also requesting that they, they, they appoint someone else to have a committee.
No, I'm not appointing...
Yes, you did.
I'm not appointing that, ma'am. I'm saying that it should...
You have to understand, we're, we're working back to get the services that we need.
You guys could continue that conversation outside. If you have any work you'd like, I appreciate your comments on both ends of that. Anybody else have any comments? Then we had an executive session before this meeting, the, uh, agreement. And, uh, before we adjourn, I'd just like to apologize for the sound. I mean, it's not that great to start with, and then we add all the fans, and I'm sure it wasn't very good. And we will strive to be better. And we will talk to our tech folks and see if we can't get a better system.
And the air conditioning.
And the air conditioning. Our next meeting. After this meeting, we're gonna have another executive session. We'll talk on that at the next meeting. Next regular meeting is August nineteenth, in Missouri.